Do the full rotation, right? Or did you?
Not yet. I'm doing the push, 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 push so far.
I got.
I got on my first day. Don't do that. The best part is that electrical stim.
Yeah, at the end.
I love that. I just tell them to turn it up as high as they can.
Me too.
Like an electric shock?
Things wasn't feeling good, so we have Chris.
Okay.
Okay.
We're going to call to order the regular city council meeting of January 10th, 2022, believe it or not. Madam Clerk, the roll, please.
Bixson.
Here.
Savia.
Here.
Albrecht.
Here.
Gould.
Here.
Harrison.
Here.
Peterson.
Here.
Sage.
Here.
Thank you. We now please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody, for coming tonight. And as you can tell, to be cautious for everybody, we are all wearing masks tonight. So thank you, everybody, for coming and braving the COVID and the winter. So I don't know which is worse right now. Both kind of bad. First, we have public comment scheduled and non-scheduled. Brian, are you there? Anybody there?
He was in practice.
All right, well, we will come back to that. Any public comment here? Doesn't look like there's anybody here right now. So we will move on to approval of the minutes. Consideration of the minutes of the regular meeting of December 20th, 2021.
So moved.
Motion by Councilmember Peterson.
Support.
Support by Councilmember Harrison. Discussion. Madam Clerk, the roll, please.
Bixson.
Yes.
Savia.
Yes.
Albrecht.
Yes.
Gould.
Yes.
Harrison.
Yes.
Peterson.
Yes.
Sage.
Yes.
Yes, tonight, I think, for the first time ever, we do not have something on the consent agenda.
Mayor, if I could interrupt real quick.
Yes.
I just want to make sure for the clerk. Clerk, were you able to get the adjustments that you and I talked about for my section on the minutes?
Ah, yes.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure, maybe let council know.
Under, let's see, under Agenda Item 10D, City Manager gave an update on the RCS item. It says that they have sent out a request for proposal for the site, and that needs to be corrected, that they are, have created a draft. They'll be sending that to Oakland County, and then it should be sent out in the month of January, not already sent out. So I'll make that correction. If there's no objections.
No.
None. Thank you. So we have no old business, no table items, no public hearings, legislative deliberation. We had the Pink Creek Trail 31.7 project grant. Mr. City Manager or Councilmember Sage? Which, Council, Mr. City Manager, why don't you go?
Happy to start off. So I'm trying to look, we should have, and that's, I'm going to be knocking on the door here with Chris to see, we should actually have at least Melissa from the Pink Creek Trailway on the meeting. Actually, I spoke with her probably just an hour ago. And I also was talking with the SEAL. What is, the specific project that we're talking about is another grant opportunity for the, what's the Pink Creek Trail, Trail Bridge at 31.7. That's in your packet, starting on page seven. Thank you. And we currently have one grant that's out. Yeah, I got the chief telling me it's working, but it's not working. We're still working on it? Okay. Thank you. So, so we have another grant opportunity, and I'll just share what Melissa Ford, who is the Pink Creek Trailways Commission Trail Manager, shared with me, is that she has met with the Oakland County Parks and Rec Department about this next grant. And they basically have given her what they feel is kind of a thumbs up, that it fits within the parameters of their grant guidelines. However, she noted that they have a January 15th deadline to apply. So there would be two, so we have one grant that we've already applied for that would be up to $25,000, and this other one would be up to $50,000. So we're going after, again, the $50,000, which would be the engineering work for this particular one. If we, for this Oakland County Parks and Rec grant, this would be, the maximum funding would be $25,000. It would require a 25% match, which the Pink Creek Trailways, the Friends of the Pink Creek Trailways would contribute $1,051. So if we don't get the other grant, the city would need to fund the other $25,649 to complete the project. We're hopeful that we'll actually get the other full grant and won't even need this one. However, we might only get a portion, and so that's why it makes sense to apply for both of these grants. This particular grant does require a resolution, and that's where, in your packet on page nine, there is the resolution that states that we basically would be going after this grant, that the city's obligation would be the $25,649, and that the Pink Creek, or the Friends of the Pink Creek Trailway would provide $1,051. And then there is also a needs assessment that would need to be done as we're going through the project. Melissa will be sharing, I guess, if she jumps on at some point here, that she's got an estimate right now, and it looks like it's actually up to $18,000. And it sounds like we're going to hear the technical experience here.
He's restarting it, so we're working on.
Okay.
We're having technical difficulties, if anybody is watching.
That means we're not broadcasting?
We're live broadcasting. It just, it sounds like they're not able to participate and call in, is the part.
It's just a Zoom link.
Just a Zoom link. Okay.
We're sure they're up there, though, right? They didn't just all go home?
Yeah. I was going to say, they were on there when I set upstairs. So Melissa provided a SEAL, the engineer that they're working with, and also the city's engineer, with an update that the assessment for the environmental assessment estimate is up to $18,000. So that's also another potential cost that, again, we can apply for various grants. There's another grant that we're actually looking at, which is through the state of Michigan, which is the Department of Natural Resources. And then there's a few other grants that we'll be going after altogether. We estimate the overall project somewhere between $800 and $1 million is the total. But for us to move forward at this juncture, we would need to approve this resolution, which would allow us to apply for this, this grant for, and meet the January 15th deadline. Again, this is a, basically a concurrent application, as we have another one out there. They, we're trying to cover that $50,000 and also trying to cover the, the environmental assessment component.
Councilmember Albrecht.
Blaine, I was trying to figure out the math here, and I mean, you know, maybe it's, I know the project is way up there, but it says the maximum funding for pre-development grants is $25,000. It also requires a 25% match. 25% match of $25,000 would be $6,200. But then we're putting in $26,000, of which the Pink Creek Trail is doing $1,000, and we're doing 25, 6. So what am I missing?
Yep. Yeah. So from the proposal, the actual project cost, which is a few pages later, it's actually $51,000. Yeah. $51,700. So the maximum for this particular grant is the 25. That's the max. However, they would require the 25%, a minimum of a 25% match. So when you actually, if we only get, so it's $51,000, so, and change. If we got 25, we still have, really, it's fifth, in this case, it's more than the 25%. It would be, you know, basically 50%. Now, if we get our first grant, that actually could cover $50,000 out of the 51s, seven. But we don't know that if, you know, and we won't know until April for both of these. That deadline already, we got it in before the end of the year, so we met that deadline. This one is the January 15th.
So 25% of the 51 is about $13,000. Why are we asking for 26 tonight?
Well, potentially, you're asking for 26. If we get, again, the other grant, we won't even potentially need this grant at all. However, we don't know if we'll get that other grant, so we're applying for this one. If we don't get that other grant, and we do get this grant, the maximum is the 25.
Right.
So there was the remaining out of the 51, 70, that's the amount minus the $1,051 from the Friends.
I get it now. Thank you.
Okay.
Councilmember Sage?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, Councilmember Albrecht, yes, it is confusing. So the first step in the process is the design and engineering study, right? We need that to even move forward. We had the luxury of being able to apply for two grants in a very short time span here. So we're covering all bases, if you will. But we also have the potential to apply all these dollars to the ultimate million-dollar cost to this bridge. It's kind of a contingency, if you will. We're basically earmarking some money that we may not even need, but we also know that whatever we're earmarking goes to the first step in the process, the design engineering study, and then we move forward.
So if we get that first grant of $50,000, get this one at $25,000, we can use this money towards the $1 million cost?
That and the environmental study. So that's the other piece of this that we were not aware of when we applied for the first grant, which came back in now at the $18,000, which covers the wetland delineation, the endangered species report, and bat ID, bat tree ID, and the muscle survey. So.
Mayor Protem, Savia.
Thank you. So this is Bridge 31.7, and this is the only bridge that Rochester has. I know, I appreciate there's a timeline in here, and I know we've talked about this bridge, but when did we first, I'll say, study or know that we have to replace this?
I would say they were talking, they were talking about replacing this when I first came on to City Council. So this has been a long.
Twenty years?
Yep.
Yes.
Well, AEW in here said it was 2016.
2016 was the last time we did a inspection.
But they've been talking about that bridge needed, because it could never handle emergency equipment, even like 20 years ago, that's why they needed to. So it's been a long time that I've known, but it's always been such a large number that nothing happened.
And it's important to note that of the 13 bridges on the Pink Creek Trail, one has been replaced. All remaining bridges need to be replaced based on inspection. Ours just happens to be the, probably the one that's more dedicated to replacement immediately, if you will, just based on its design and its, its worn out, its usefulness, based on its design.
Probably gets more volume of traffic, too, based on the location.
Agreed. Councilmember Peterson?
Yeah, so, and reviewing that, because my question was, you're like, so if this happened and if we knew about it in 2016, that it really needed to be replaced then, or whenever, but from here, it was 2016, where did this go in the city's timeline? And who actually covers or maintains the condition of the bridges? Is it just through infrastructure? Is it, you know, a department?
It is a department. It's underneath our Public Works in our Parks and Rec, so in the Parks Division. We have dedicated dollars, and that's where, if we were needing the $25,000, we would have to, or I would suggest we would pull it from the $25,000, which would be our maintenance line item from that budget. Annually, there's maintenance work that's done on that particular bridge, as well as the ones that are in our parks. So right, right out here at our municipal park, there's several bridges here as well. So AEW started in, when I got here, at the end of 2015, we got them on a schedule to investigate our pedestrian bridges and see if, you know, what maintenance we can do and what we can do to provide longevity. As has been noted, this particular bridge does not have the capability for emergency or other vehicles to, to go over it. So that's why it's been identified through our Parks Master Plan as something that, if there's dollars to do more than just maintain it, that it should be replaced. We've continued to have logs and other things underneath that bump against the bridge, and so we've been, since I've been here, we've removed several logs, log jams, I guess, is what, what Public Works would, would call them, to, to allow them to go underneath. If the bridge is upgraded, they're going to do all that sort of studying, I'm sure, with also the trout and some of the other things as well, to improve the flow so that there would not be log jams and they would not have issues, that we've been doing some of the maintenance, as well as some of the removal, just to keep the, the stream flowing.
Councilmember Harrison?
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate the efforts that Melissa and the Pink Creek Trailways has made in pursuing these grant opportunities. I think this is, you know, the major way that we want to fund projects like these. So I appreciate the effort, and I understand that we're working on a tight deadline here. So I want to make a motion to approve the city manager to move forward on these various grant applications.
So a motion by Councilmember Harrison?
Support.
Support by the Mayor Protem. Councilmember Gould.
Yeah, thank you. So I guess I have two questions. So this is not an either/or. We are, we'd be voting to approve going after this money even if the 50-some-thousand grant does come through, or doesn't, doesn't matter, irrelevant. How long is this environmental survey good for? By starting this process, are we within X months or X years, according to this timeline, going to have to come up with the $900,000? Or do we have that? Can we do that? Does this obligate us?
Mr. City Manager?
Yep. Great question. I talked with Melissa around 6 o'clock today and asked her that exact same question. So with the first grant, she confirmed there is for sure no obligation to move forward. We could actually do what was noted, the engineering component. It could be on the shelf and just ready, waiting for us to gain the money or the funding somehow, grants, or however we go forward. With this particular one, that is a question that she would have to ask the Oakland County Parks and Rec, but before accepting the money, we would have that answer.
So we could decline it?
Her understanding right now is we could decline it if there's other obligations.
Can I follow up on that? But the environmental study must have a time limit associated with it, things of that nature, as the environment changes. It can't be for more than a few years, I would imagine, right?
I would assume, yes. I have not actually, Melissa was the one that got the, the quote and the estimate. Typically, from my past experience, it's normally a two- or three-year window, because the environment does change. So I'm assuming there is, with the engineering component, that it's going to identify, you know, the, the fish and some of the other wildlife and structural issues. Some of those things might not change, although the environmental, like the fish or some of those things might change. So there might need to be a portion of the environmental that could need to be done if a number of years do go by.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes, thank you. So the governor has stated that in her 10 days of resolutions or whatever that she sent out, that there is some federal money, I mean, there's some money regarding bridges. Would this qualify for any of that funding?
I have a meeting with both DLZ and AEW this Thursday to actually go over that particular one and to look at our bridges and infrastructure, as well as our water, sewer, sidewalks, anything that could, could qualify. So I don't have an answer for you yet, but if it is eligible, we will apply for it.
So a follow-up then, because if this has really been going on for this long, and it's been, I don't know how much money we've actually put into it to maintain it, what happens if we don't? Do we, where are we going to get the money from to continue fixing this, to get it done? Or is it just going to get started and not completed? I mean, we have to know where that money's coming from, because it is almost $1 million.
Or, and another follow-up is, could we, you know, we want to fix it so the emergency vehicles can go over it. Do we have to have it like that, or can we just maintain it as is? I mean, I know it's preferable to have that, but could we keep it the way it is and just maintain it?
Yeah. So I'll, I'll answer the just maintain it. We are doing, we are maintaining it so that it is usable by pedestrian and bicycle traffic. And we're going to continue unless there's structural issues, and then we would unfortunately have to, you know, close the bridge if there were structural issues. There is, I can ask, it's on the even years, is how we have the bridge, bridges going through, and all the bridges throughout our community with, I believe it's within six years, we, out of the even years, we will have all of them, a full cycle would have gone through. I can ask them their estimate on how long we could do that for this particular bridge. My understanding is the Pink Creek Trailways is wanting to have this upgraded, and so they were the ones that identified it as their number-one priority out of all of the bridges that are remaining. My also understanding was, it's been a couple of years since they've done another bridge, and that one, I believe, was around $800,000. So they were able to get a majority of the funding through grants for that, and that's what we'd hope in this case. There's actually more funding at both the federal and the state level now than there was even for that previous one. So we're trying to get in, quite honestly, with these two, the one that we've already done at the end of last year, and then this one, before there's really even competition for this particular engineering component. And it will benefit us to actually have an engineering plan and scope ahead of everybody else to be able to get in for the next round, really, the first round for some of these other grants.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yes, thank you. So with that, though, City Manager Wing, do you think that having this stated that we're doing this because we want to have emergency vehicles to go on it will get us a grant sooner rather than later from the federal or state?
That, along with partnering with the Pink Creek Trailways and neighboring communities and being part of a trail system and several other things, yes.
I would prefer to vote that we actually work towards that then, to at least know that this is going to be done that way, because otherwise, we're just putting another Band-Aid on it with no use. And then my next question is, how further up is from this bridge is the next one that can't have emergency vehicles either?
It can just be it on either side, right?
Melissa did provide the trailway map. It should be in your packet, I want to say on page 12 or 13. I have not attended probably a Pink Creek Trailways meeting maybe in a, you know, a year and a half, so I don't know the answer to that question, what are the other bridges? They should be all located on here, but I'm not sure which ones are, currently do not allow vehicle traffic or emergency.
I was just curious, like, how much, you know, how much, I mean, I think it's important for as much as our trails are used, that we have emergency vehicle access to them. So I was just curious, because I don't know that answer.
Yep. Happy to, again, apologize that we're having technical difficulties. I'm sure Melissa would be able to answer that, but I'm happy to work with her and get that and then share that with council.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so there's a motion on the table. Madam Clerk, the roll, please.
Bixson?
Yes.
Savia?
Yes.
Albrecht?
Yes.
Gould?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Sage?
Yes.
Thank you. Councilmember Peterson?
Can we just make sure that motion does state in there that there was that, that we don't have to, if it's the cost-effectiveness or something more so that was stated earlier?
Sir?
Sure.
That's okay with the motion?
Yeah.
And, okay. Thank you. Next is a consideration of ordinance amendment to Section 2306, Light and Illumination Residential. Mr. City Manager?
All right. So this one has mostly been working on from our attorney.
Melissa?
No, yeah, not Melissa. So let me text Attorney Krot here for a quick second and see if he's, oh, are we getting? Oh, you're on the phone. All right. There's, there we go.
Is he ready?
Yep.
Okay, hang on. Okay, I'm going to put you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Hello.
Mr. City Attorney, welcome.
Thank you.
So we're talk, we're talking about the Light and Illumination Ordinance Residential. So would you like to give a, give a report on that?
Sure. I was just watching the hotline, so I will jump to the lighting.
So it is working.
So can everybody hear me okay?
Yes.
Yep.
Okay, great. So before City Council tonight is the next, I guess, phase of the Light and Illumination Ordinance. This was done at the request of City Council, which is to provide some thoughts and some possible ordinance amendment language to Section 2306 to address City Council, excuse me, to address residential to residential type regulations. And so when we, City Council recalls that the last meeting, there was a, City Council adopted regulations that did not address regulations for single-family residences. So I went through, looked at some other possible ordinances, and came up with some possible thoughts for City Council. There was not any specific directive given on this. So what I put in here is some possibilities. The first being is to reduce the foot candle limitation from one foot candle to a half a foot candle at the lot line. And that's reflected in, we're talking in Section, subsection 3, as well as subsection 4. Subsection 4 is the new subsection I, I think we would put in. It's a, that just deals with single-family residential lighting in residential districts. Another suggestion, other than reducing the foot candle limitation, is to, is to call out, I guess we'll call it, bright lights, so that would be in subsection 4B. It would be exterior lights that exceed 100 watts or the LED equivalent. Spotlights and floodlights, spotlights and floodlights in single-family residences, if they're that level or higher, then they need to be directed away from and shielded from other residential lots. I think a typical outdoor light, we're not talking about, you know, the, the traditional carriage lights, but this would be in exceeding 100 watts or spot, or floodlights. And then C, I put in some possibilities of, I think somebody mentioned, having motion sensors, so it's, so lights are not on 24/7. So in this particular section, I put in some possible language of spotlights and floodlights on single-family residences must be equipped with motion sensing capabilities so that the lights are not activated due to motion off the property. That was one of the concerns, was passing by vehicles, triggering, triggering the motion sensors or animals off-site or people off-site. And then they must shut off not more than, I put in just blank minutes. I don't know what is appropriate or what City Council, they even want to put one in there, it'll leave that to Planning Commission to figure out if that's one that you want to push to Planning Commission to discuss. And essentially, it can't be continuously illuminated. So motion sensing for spotlights and floodlights, just as we all know what those types of lights do. And then anticipating the question, of course, like we did with the other types of lights, what happens for lights that are not compliant with these, these subsections? And we put, essentially, I put in the same sunset provision as I did in, in the last one, so that gives people an opportunity to replace or to change out bulbs or to shield within six months or if the light's being replaced. Finally, the, I put in there that this subsection 4 is in addition to and not to the exclusion of other applicable ordinances. So, you know, it would, you know, the other ordinances like nuisance would, would remain in place. So those are, you know, those are possibilities for City Council to, to discuss. If City Council wants to pursue any or all of those, then the requested action at this point would be to direct administration to submit that, these to Planning Commission to then start the zoning process, zoning ordinance amendment process there. But at least at that point, Planning Commission will have some directive or some input from City Council as to what it anticipates seeing coming back.
Thank you. Council? Councilmember Harrison? Councilmember Harrison?
Attorney Krot, thank you for drafting this and bringing it to us. I appreciate your effort. I, I'm wondering, can you explain to me in layman's terms, what is a foot candle and how are residents reasonably expected to measure that in their yard?
Uh, that's, that's a great question. So the foot candles are the, uh, how light is measured, you know, the intensity of light is measured, so that's just a unit of, um, uh, I guess that's, that's the unit on how light is measured. Um, there's several ways that, or a couple of different ways that, uh, I could see if someone wanted to say, hey, listen, I want to know what mine is. And, and there's, you know, there's different, uh, instruments and I anticipate from talking to administration that the city wouldn't invest in, in a couple of these, uh, we refer to as lightometers, just because it's, it's easy to remember, but, um, but otherwise if there's, there's some, um, there's some apps that, that can do that, um, but you're right, a, a layperson wouldn't necessarily know how much light is being admitted. Um, however, also know that this is, much like other zoning ordinances, you know, this one we anticipate to be more complaint-driven, uh, than, than, you know, than the fire department, there's no way that the fire department would be able to canvas and audit all the lights in the city. So this would be more so on a, uh, if someone's saying, hey, I think that light is just too, too bright, it's too, you know, it's, you know, we, we think it should be tested, that's when the fire department could come out or the building department could come out and take a reading of that. I don't anticipate this being a, um, often-used or regulated situation, uh, just because in the past, uh, the, the fire department gets maybe two, you know, different complaints a year. Um, so those are easily handled by, by the fire department, taking those measurements, and I know that the city would be willing to, uh, to take measurements if people just said, hey, I want to know. So I don't want to speak for the chief, but I think that's kind of where things, how it would happen.
Jeff, the chief's, uh, yeah, I just texted the chief to come on down, so.
Welcome, Chief.
Hi, Chief.
Mr. Mayor, Council, how are you doing?
Hello, hello?
I want to sit, yeah, thank you.
So I heard the question was how, um, a foot candle? It really comes from the old, old idea of a candle and if you had it lit, the amount of light and that would be considered a foot candle. For a resident to measure it for themselves would be almost impossible. Uh, we have, uh, devices, uh, from the fire department that we can measure from a scientific standpoint, so it'd be very difficult for a resident to measure it themselves.
Thank you.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yeah, so, so Chief, thanks for being here. Um, question then regarding that, so how would that, I know you'd have to bring your tool out, but people, a lot of people today have the strong lights in their backyard, okay? And, or along the fence and everything else like that. How, how does that, cause those aren't shielded or anything, they're just bulbs that are hanging. How, how would that be measured? Um, because they're not, it's not the same, you, you have a lot of light, um, from when people use that type of light, so are we going to be incorporating that into this light ordinance? I guess, I guess it's really not your question, but...
Well, I think it's kind of a joint answer between myself and Attorney Krot, but what we would do is we would, just as the, uh, proposed ordinance says, that we would go to the property line and measuring five feet above the ground, um, I believe the proposal right now is for Council to consider, uh, half a candela, and we would measure it at that point there, at the property line.
Right.
So it could be brighter in the middle of the lot, directly under the lights, but the place that we will measure will be at the property line.
Okay, so in the one property that I know of, those lights actually light up the sidewalk, which is good for at nighttime, but they're, and a lot of people have these now in their backyard, so. I don't know, are we going to be including those in this light ordinance or are we including the house lights that are on the house?
I guess I'm gonna maybe kind of, uh, go to Attorney Krot and, uh, my understanding, Attorney Krot, correct me if I'm wrong, is, is if it was an unshielded light and, um, and you could see it and it was casting the light, uh, at the property line over the candela, then it would be in violation? Am I interpreting that correct, Attorney Krot?
Yes, so essentially any light that would be in violation or in exceedance of the, uh, candela limitation, so the proposed is one-half, so it doesn't matter what kind of light, if it's, if it's over a half a foot candela at the lot line, then that would be, that would need to be addressed. Um, as far as the, the motion sensing lights, those are dealing with floodlights and anything with, um, floodlights, spotlights or, uh, lights that exceed 100 watts, uh, those would need to be shielded or directed away from other residential, uh, lots.
I might also add, if I can, um, it, if any of you have been in a building, when the power has gone out and the emergency lights have turned on, um, the emergency lights are required to produce one-half a candela, and that's what we're talking about, of lighting, so that you can see the way out of the building or through the path of egress. So if you can think back to maybe a time that you've been in a building to where the power is off, that's the type of darkness, um, that would be anticipated.
Okay, Council? Mayor Protem Salvia?
Thank you. Just a quick clarification, City Attorney. So our current ordinance has one foot candle, so kind of the discussion around is reducing that measurement to a half candle?
Mr. Attorney, is that right?
I'm, I'm sorry, Ms. Salvia is, uh, she, she said, I, the, right now it's at one, one from the candle and then, then she broke up, I'm sorry.
Sorry, that's all right. So currently, our ordinance has it at one foot candle, and so the discussion tonight is around reducing that to one-half candle?
Well, now, keep in mind, this is, this whole process, this ordinance was, is City Council-directed, so this isn't something necessarily that, uh, me or administration are trying to, um, put into place, but rather to give City Council options if it wishes to address, um, uh, the lighting further than it already is. So i- if, if you're asking City Attorney, if, if it should be reduced from one foot candle to a half, I would say I don't really think there's a need, but if City Council, uh, believes that it should be reduced in the residential to residential, uh, situation and then, then this is one possibility of how to do that.
No, actually, my question was more along the lines of, we're all trying to figure out how reasonable is it for a resident to measure the lighting, you know, half a foot candle? I'm thinking about the lights that we have on our back deck, on our trees, on our house. How am I, as a resident, going to measure that? So what I'm hearing is currently I should be measuring them for one foot candle, and so we're discussing whether it's practical for us to measure them at a half a foot candle?
At the property line.
At the property line. Is that, is that accurate?
That's correct.
Okay.
That's correct. That, that was one way that I thought if City Council wanted to make the light ordinance more restrictive, then that would be one lever that can be pulled, which is to reduce the amount of light that spills over onto, uh, another property.
Mr. Mayor, if I may? Well, the reason why City Attorney and the, the staff are continuing around the, um, the measurement of a candela is, is it gives us something to be able to actually measure in something that's scientific as opposed to having an opinion, to say, our opinion is that the light is too bright, uh, we don't want to do that, we want to be able to be specific. Now, uh, to Mayor Protem's point, it's very difficult for our residents to be able to go out to their house and measure the light without a device, a special device. So we would have to measure that from the city's standpoint. But we would continue to ask City Council to use the science of the candela to go ahead and establish a base of what might be appropriate or not appropriate, so that we really have something to take away an opinion and use more, uh, science to go ahead and make a decision.
Councilmember Harrison?
Do you feel like measuring these candellas, is that going to create an undue burden on your department or excess work, or do you foresee this as being an, an easy part of your daily job?
Um, well, the, um, the, the problem is, is, is if we continue to operate on a complaint basis, I have to be honest with you, is we get very few complaints at all in regards to lighting. Um, we've had a few in regards to residential to commercial and that's been pretty cut and dried because of the way City Council has approved the, the, the current codes. Um, where it becomes a little bit more dicey now is, is, uh, some of the, the, how, how we would interpret what we can see the bulb or we don't see the bulb. Um, if City Council is anticipating that this now goes from being complaint-based to being enforced throughout the city, then quite honestly, I don't have the staff, uh, to be able to do the entire city. And then quite honestly, um, I would, I would think that we will have a lot of non-compliance or non-conformity, um, within the city. So I would ask City Council if we do determine, or you do determine that a change is needed, that we continue to look at this to be more complaint-based. Um, and I don't know, City Attorney, do you have anything to add to that?
No, actually, I, I said the, pretty much the same thing, I think, when you were in transit from upstairs to downstairs, so I, I did, uh, did indicate that we anticipate that wouldn't be much of a, a burden if it was complaint-based versus, um, having, you know, requesting administration to do a complete audit of the city as to what lights may be compliant or not compliant.
Councilmember Sage?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So a couple of questions for the City Attorney and the Fire Chief. Um, so it might be a moot point then, whether it's one candela or a half a candela, because that could be literally controlled by shielding and by direction that the light is pointed in, correct? To where it does not violate the lot line.
Co- correct, that, that is, that is, uh, that, you know, shielding or directing it would likely remove the, the, uh, power, the, the light strength at the property line, correct?
Okay. So the second part regarding enforcement, and, and I guess that opens a broader question as far as what are the remedies that we have in place? Um, I'm assuming they're parallel to the nuisance ordinance, so walk me through the steps that somebody that's in violation of this ordinance, what does the city go through, uh, to, to rectify?
Well, Mr. Mayor, maybe if I can, um, if you were to take a look at, say, a nuisance ordinance and if I can draw a parallel to grass, um, we will go ahead and, and, uh, look at the area, um, we actually measure the grass because, uh, of what six inches is, we'll take a picture of it. We then go ahead and, uh, right now we use a door hanger to go ahead and place on the person's door and we follow up with a letter. And according to the city, uh, charter, currently the way it's set up, they have five days to go ahead and cut their grass. Uh, we go back in five days and if the grass has not been cut, we then issue a violation and we notify our DPW and the DPW will come, they take a picture before they cut the grass and then they take a picture after they cut the grass. I would, um, based on the way that I'm reading, uh, the proposal for Council's consideration, handle things in the same way or the way that we've handled lighting to date, is, is we would go ahead and give, uh, the resident or the business owner, uh, a letter that's saying, your, your light currently violates the standard at, um, uh, because of shielding or because of it's more than one candela at the property line and you have, uh, 10 days to go ahead and correct it. Now, we use a different time for light or those types of things as we do for grass, as you might expect, if we gave 10 days for grass, it might be, you know, two feet tall. So, um, after the 10 days, if the person has not taken care of the light, we issue them, when we try to step up the politeness, we'll issue them a letter saying, hey, you, you need to get this done or contact us with your plan. Um, and if they don't do that within five days, then we will, uh, talk to the City Attorney and we will then issue, uh, civil infraction. Um, and then, once the civil infraction is issued, Mr. Attorney, I'll let you talk it through that process.
Sure. So, once it gets to the point, the chief laid out, the, the light one is, is definitely a, more applicable, how I would see this going. If it does get to the point where a, a citation is issued to the individual, uh, we are still, uh, very much compliance-based, so if they do show up to court or contact us in advance of the court date, then, and say, listen, I've got my light, sorry, I, I was out of vacation, whatever, we'll generally, uh, you know, work with them, like, you know, get the, get the issue taken care of. We're not interested in, in the 10 bucks for the, the city will get for a fine, we're interested in compliance and then, that the court has been really good to work with as far as letting us to either dismiss or to give time for people to get things resolved. And we've been reasonable, uh, with, with many people and, and, I, I can't tell you the last time we actually had to go to a hearing, cause we've ended up working out and gotten compliance on, on almost everything. I don't see the, a lighting violation being treated any differently.
Just to summarize then, so it's two letters, then we send the civil violation notice, then we go to court, and then we find. So what's the, give me a ballpark then, is that a month? Is that two months? Is that six months? What's the process?
Well, I, I will, you know, the, the, the first part is about two to three weeks.
Okay.
And City Attorney, you, you have a better idea of how we've been running on court time?
Yeah, once, uh, once a citation's issued, you know, they're getting caught back up, so I would say you're looking at 30, 45 days before the court will set up for a hearing. Oftentimes when they get the ticket, they're not usually, you know, they're, they're usually, that's the trigger for people to start talking versus to actually getting, uh, the court notice. Uh, so oftentimes we've, when people contact the fire department and say, I just got the ticket, how do I, how do I make this go away? So oftentimes we resolve these by me filing a, a little motion to, to dismiss the ticket if they get things done in advance of the court, uh, the court hearing. So we're very much encouraging, even after the ticket, that gen, usually generates, uh, phone calls saying, what do I need to do? So I can tell you, the, the, the court's probably looking at 30, 45 days be, between when they get the ticket and when it gets set for a hearing, um, but I don't control that, that's really, uh, the court's schedule at that point.
So it sounds like a couple of months?
Right.
From start to finish?
Yes.
If, if it had to go to the distance? Is that, is that a fair?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I would say so.
Councilmember Gould?
Uh, thank you. This, I think, is more of a comment than anything. It seems strange to me that, uh, choice A regarding the foot candles would be appropriate to put in, given, I, I had to Google it today, I know several of us really are familiar with that. If we put something like that in place, we could instantly be putting half the town in violation, we have no idea. Or, or maybe three-quarters of the town, but when you look at B, where it's, uh, it's, it has to do with shielding and, and, and blocking of the light, it really doesn't matter if it's 10-foot candles or half a foot candle, I would think, that may be the more straightforward way to proceed rather than confuse the public like I am.
Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Mr. Fire Chief?
Um, the, would not really make a lot of difference, in, in all honesty, the candela would probably find fewer violators than we would with, uh, shielding and, uh, and the lights. So I would anticipate having just as many actions with either one of those, but when we put them in, um, combination, it gives us a little bit, um, more, uh, not opinion, but more engineering in, into determining whether there's a risk or there's not a risk.
Councilmember Sage?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, yes, I would agree with Councilmember Gould in terms of, do we, is it one candle, half a candle? But the existing ordinance itself, on the books right now, is one candela. I don't see any reason to change that. There has to be some metric that you measure this by, otherwise then it becomes subjective, right? Everybody has an opinion of lights. So I, I like the fact that we have a basis, a metric that can be measured. I also like the, uh, support of, there are other mitigation techniques than shielding and direction of lighting, um, that can control this ordinance or, or your compliance to this ordinance. So I, I wouldn't support reducing the, the existing, uh, metric itself, leave it in place, but incorporate the other. the other suggestions that the attorney has made to us.
Just a comment, I'd have a.
That would be fine as as far as the city attorney is concerned, if that's looking for input.
I think it definitely should be complaint driven. We shouldn't just, you know, that's that's a major issue right there. So council, do we, Councilmember Harrison, did you have a comment?
I was just going to agree with Councilmember Gould. I understand wanting to, I like being science-driven and data-driven, but I feel uncomfortable mandating our residents comply with an ordinance that they can't measure themselves. They don't know what a candle light is or how to measure it, and that makes me just feel a little bit uncomfortable.
So, Mr. City Manager, what are we looking for tonight? Are we looking for more direction?
If you give us direction, we would forward this to the planning commission, or you could have further, you know, discussion, if you would like us to bring it back first, back to city council and then bring it to the planning commission?
If I could summarize what I think I heard tonight, and maybe that could be helpful, is it it seems that the the changing of the foot candle doesn't seem to be as important and can probably be removed, so 4A would then be removed. And and to keep the exterior light, B and C and D, for that matter, the rest of it, I think, was if there's shielding requirements for flood and and other exterior lights, I think that then a motion sensor, it seems like those were the the ones that city council could get could get behind. And I think if that's the case, I don't see a need for it to come back as much as to forward it to planning commission with those possibilities for consideration.
Councilmember Albrecht.
Do we, I agree with that it should be complaint driven. Does that need to be reflected, the city attorney, in the ordinance?
Yeah, I would just I would just send a, so this is, if you remember, this is kind of a a one-off situation where city council looks at it first. So I would send it to, I would send it to planning commission just without that A in it, because planning commission hasn't seen this at all. So this would just be a document that'd remove A, move everything up, and then change things back to one foot candle, and then talk to, and my memo to the planning commission would be, here's what city council wants, planning commission to consider.
So so we don't have to add any language in there that, because the fire chief said he doesn't want to have to go out and examine all this? Is there any language that needs to be added to this before you send it to planning commission that this is a complaint-driven ordinance, I guess was my question?
Oh, I don't think that's necessary. That's that's currently how the fire department in the city does it, is complaint on various, like nuisance type or other complaints. If city council wanted complaint-driven language in there, I'm happy to put it in there, but city council is given directive on other similar situations to be complaint-driven and not just go out and try to find violations. So I could go either way if city council has a preference.
I think we should add the language.
I agree.
I'd like to see, complaint-driven. Mr., that city attorney, two chiefs agree with that?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, that was, I think what I heard was that there's an interest in having complaint-driven language in there and to put that in the ordinance.
Correct.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, I could do that.
Thank you. Councilmember Peterson.
Yes, thank you. So on C, 4C, regarding the spotlights and floodlights, yes, I know I brought up about having those motion censored. However, this says that they must be, you know, equipped to, you know, that you're going to have to change them out basically, right? The thing is, so that would not have to take place if they were not over that one foot candle on the property line, correct?
Well, not correct. The way it's written now is, spotlights and floodlights would have to have motion sensing regardless of the of the power.
See, and that's where I think that if they're not in violation, I don't know why they would have to be.
Right.
So I guess I'm uncomfortable with that.
I would agree.
Because they're not in violation, if they're not in violation, because normally they're like not on the edge of the property line, they're usually in the center. So.
And I don't disagree with that. My, the only difference I could see is if we wouldn't need that at all, but then we if we, because we have the subsection B.
Right.
Because if it's under the, you know, those must be shielded or directed away, this was, I guess, to address the complaint of lights on continuously regarding of regardless of the strength of the light, because I know that there was a complaint that, you know, the light is on 24/7. So if city council is is happy with just having shielding and directed away without motion sensing, then we would remove that C.
Well, I would ask to remove C then, if council agrees, only because if it's not in violation, why would we make people change those?
I agree.
I agree as well. So why don't you take off part C? Councilmember Sage.
So just to, I guess, recap, we would be looking at a proposed recommendation to planning commission to revise 3A back to its original one-foot candle, 3C back to its original one-foot candle, 4A back to or revised to one-foot candle, strike 4C.
That we're striking 4A. Yeah, 4A too.
If I can clarify on that, we would probably strike 4A just because the all lighting is subject to the one-foot candle and the other ones that we just adopted, so it would be redundant to have it in there. It's not wrong to have it in there, but we could strike that because it's still captured by the other per, the other section that we just adopted.
So does the the verbiage in the commercial and multifamily ordinance portion currently, would that include single-family resident to comply to the one-foot candle?
It would.
Okay.
That's that's the only, that's in section C, 3C.
And that's already in effect?
Correct.
Correct.
It's already in 3C.
Okay.
Councilmember Peterson.
Yes, thank you. So if these changes, do you feel these would address some of the complaints that we've received by changing this, or is it really the foot candle that's the issue?
Well, I can tell you that the one, and chief can can correct me, but the the one that we seem to have a complaint on currently has already been measured as far as the foot candela's go. And it would, I believe the last reading that was taken was, I believe, a quarter candela. But that would, so that's that's kind of where the spotlight or floodlight to to be directed away, that may address it. But as far as the the light intensity, that one did not, was not in violation, would not be in violation of the one or even a half-foot candle. Chief, is that, I recognize?
Yeah, Mr. Attorney, based on the conversation when I did the sampling, it was .25 candela. And then the further up discussions, as you recall, we discussed on how we then could go ahead and at least address the complaint at hand, and that's where you came up with the idea of directional or shielding.
That's that's right.
And can can you order the shielding or directional?
Yes, just, Mr. Mayor, the similar to what we have currently done between residential and commercial property, similar to what councilperson Sage has alluded to a few times about trying to do some of the same things with residential that we currently do with commercial or multifamily. So I believe city attorney has kind of brought over some of that language to go into the residential that would not be obtrusive and put everybody out of compliance, but yet would help address the concerns that some residents have had and make it something that we could actually work with our residents for compliance as opposed to have to get into violating the resident and costing them undue expense.
So council, do we, when are we sat with them, and then are we comfortable with it going to planning commission, or do you want it to come back here one more time for a look?
All right, planning commission.
Yeah, planning.
Okay, so, do you have that, Mr. City Attorney?
I do, so thank you very much.
All right.
Your Honor, at this time, we do have a public comment with a hand raised, and we have given them Blaine's phone number to call. So I'm not sure if it was on this item, but Brian said the hand was raised, so maybe it is. So if we want to let that for just a minute, Brian is going to transfer that info.
I'm happy as soon as I get a call to.
Okay.
Yeah.
Walk it up to the podium.
And.
I don't know if it's on this site, I mean, maybe you can check with their text, Brian, to see if.
I just sent it to him.
Yeah, this item or not.
I do agree that we don't want to try to explain candelas to every.
No.
Resident. Well, why don't we do this? Why don't we keep moving, and then if the call comes, we'll take the call and we can, if this is the topic and they want to, we'll take that call. Okay. So next on to reports and regular business, there are not any. Thank you, chief and chief for coming.
I'll be on call upstairs, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you, guys. Receive report from the various boards and commissions. We have one report tonight, a report from the Budget and Finance Committee, Councilmember Harrison.
Thank you, mayors. We met last Friday for our meeting. We all know that the budget workshop that was scheduled for January 8th has been postponed to February 26, 9:00 a.m. at the fire department. So please be aware of that change. The presentation has been included in the packet. Our budgeting committee's gone over it a number of times and made and suggested changes. I want to encourage fellow council members to please do the same and let us know if there's anything you want to see in advance to the meeting on February 26, or we can discuss it there at that time. I think the most important thing in this packet right now is the the SWAT analysis. So we have that on page 20 in the manager's report, and that SWAT analysis, we would like, we're asking council to provide a review of that. If you want to see anything moved or changed or added that's not currently in it, please provide that to administration by next Monday, because that is going to be an important part of the discussion as we move forward, because we have scheduled a SWAT discussion for the January 24th meeting. We're going to discuss that after our regularly scheduled city council meeting, and that's when we'll do the rankings. So right now, we're just looking for definitions, you know, verbiage, any words that you want to see included. And then the last item that we, we have an updated budget schedule, but I think those two very important dates, the January 24th and the February 26th, I've already noted. So please just take a look at that updated schedule and let us know if you have any concerns about it. The last item that we covered, I'm sure all of you have seen, there's been some job postings on the city website, and it's really important that we share these job postings because we need and want quality candidates. So we have an assistant city manager slash economic and community development director position posted to our website right now, so please share that with anyone who you might feel would be a qualified candidate. We're also, another important one to note, is the building and planning clerk position has also been posted. I'll defer to the other budget committee members. Is there anything else that we'd like to add?
Nothing else? I think it's a good report.
Yep. Okay, thank you. Now, we do have our resident who is here, so Pat Keen is calling in to talk about, I assume, the lighting issue.
All right, Pat, you're ready to go. Oh, thank you so much. Can everybody hear me?
Yes, we can, Pat, and Happy New Year to you.
Because I think your system isn't working right, and I now can barely hear you.
We can hear you, Pat.
You can?
Yes.
Thank you. Well, of course, it was regarding the light, and there was a few things that came to mind because we're using words candle power, candle foot, candela, candela, and those are different measurements. We also can't measure like we used to because of the type of bulbs used. What measures heat? What measures output? What measures intensity? Next, to take us, we were only, when we asked for the .5, we were only going back to what Rochester always had until Jeff Cusperston, when he was city mayor, and it came through, and we did this light study thing, and to make a long story short, everybody felt like we were we were flabbergasted when they upped it to the one candle power or the one candela, actually candle power, because that increased the intensity of the light at a property line. You've got houses three feet from a property line, but you're giving away rights. This ordinance, I don't see where we're addressing the glare and really carriage lights as such. And to find out just now for the first time that maybe a light was measured with a complaint measuring a .25 does not tell me why I have that glare from a carriage light illuminating through my entire house, direct into my bedroom, illuminating the lock on my porch, and that's across the street in another guy's backyard, where I, we can't even use our porch. Family and friends uncomfortable. It doesn't explain that. It doesn't explain why he has to illuminate the interior of my closet in my bedroom. We spent over $1,000 on blinds to block the backyard lights, illuminating and blinding us walking into our own house, eating in our dining room, sitting in our living room because you're looking out those back windows, or even cooking, deprived of that because of somebody's big bright lights. So we shouldn't be, we should be looking at, everybody can direct their light down and shield. You're paying $4,000 in taxes, $3,000, $6,000 a year in taxes, and you're building these huge houses. You can afford to shield your light from your neighbor. You'll have better visibility, everything is safer for everybody, and I'm not saying where we're looking at it that way. Why are we doing it from a defensive standpoint of, I have the right to light, I'm going to go, let's go one candle candle power or candela at a property line, or I don't see why a spotlight and and a floodlight can't be the way they are if there's not complaint, and, you know, if they're within the power, you're still producing glare. And I will tell you, with these pocket-sized yards, I have yet to see one spotlight and one floodlight that isn't illuminating more properties, sides of houses that nobody else that aren't entitled to, and in the windows. People got tired of even complaining because it got them nowhere, and this is kind of where we're at right now. I don't know how this is going to help. I'm living more so than Comerica Park. I'm coming home to lights from three sides of my house, through my entire house and every single window. Who pays to block a light that originates on another property? So easy to direct your lights to your own property. What makes us feel that we have the right to give away someone else's property right by ordinance language and say, you can live with that? You're telling me I'm going to live with that spotlight across the street, which, by the way, is a carriage light? Here's two garage lights light all the way up my damn driveway. Why, across the street? No. To live like this in Rochester is really not living well. I'm sorry. We have a lot of good lighting. We can walk up and down our streets and see people directed their lights down, they've shielded them. Visibility is beautiful and safe. But when I hear words like, I'm on council, how do people measure that? All I've heard at the table in the discussions, how do I measure my light? How do I measure my light? Not once did anybody of authority say, you're going to have to measure your lights. If you want to know if your light is over a property line or a problem, ask your neighbor or walk to your property line and align with your light. Put up a piece of paper and your finger. If there's a shadow, maybe you want to reconsider how much lighting you have and what's really necessary, and maybe, being a good neighbor, you would shield and redirect. That's what we need to do here. These houses are close together, these are pocket-sized yards, and we are overlighting and taking away people's rights on their property. I'm paying my taxes, and I can't use my porch unless you want to be blinded, wear sunglasses, or, excuse me, flip the chair so I'm looking into the window of my house. I've shown you more times than what I want to how deep bright these lights are, and I've also demonstrated there, no matter how I put all my lights on, I was standing under my chandelier in my dining room with all the chandelier lights on, with living room lights on, and look what that spotlight looked like. Look what that light, which is a carriage light, looked like during the day in one photograph. So I would tell you, I don't know how this is going to help me, I don't know what you're going to do. I feel right now defeated, and I feel like I have to live less than, that I have to live shuttered up and pay taxes on what I can't use. live shuttered up and pay taxes on what I can't use, and my expenses are going to skyrocket just so I can have the interior of my house halfway dark, like an evening or night, to sleep comfortable, without having someone say, "Wear a mask," to bed, because that's what we've heard people say before, that we're in the city. It's not going to happen. And as far as the $1,000 for the blinds, maybe they need to pay for it out back, and maybe the $800 and some dollars, they need to pay for it across the street, but then they still have three big windows to pay for that they're lighting in, and that still does not give me use of my yard or porch. So, anyway, I thank you for looking at this, but right now, I feel like it has been rolled back, and I just don't know how it's going to help this situation at all, or others that are in it. So simple. At other municipalities, residential to residential, the light could not cross a property line, and you know what? They had 100% compliance before their two years, they issued no tickets, there was no extra expenses by any ordinance officer, and everybody came into compliance. I don't know why Rochester is such an exception and has to muddle, almost like mucking it up and getting so complex and complicated that everything becomes a debate and is argumentative. It's not argumentative or a debate. When you're in your house, can stand halfway in your house, put a finger up with a piece of paper, and here's all the shadows, but turn your own lights off and open your drapes, and all you see is all the light and the glare from a light. That's not subjective at all. And that should make everybody feel uncomfortable, when it is allowed and you're paying taxes here. So, I don't know. Thank you for considering, but right now, I feel, I don't think it's going to help, and I don't know what we're going to do, but we certainly have to look at our expenses in this city, don't we? But thank you. Maybe I'll talk to one of you later, if you have other ideas, but right now, there's no reason we should be pushing it to one. It may be it should be rolled back to zero, and at least a .5, and I just feel, like I said, defeated, and I'm going to go around right now to everybody else that told me, beating my head against a brick wall. I have a lot of expenses here, and you know what? I am not going to pay for them at this time. I think the neighbors need to pay for it. It's not their, it's not my light, it's theirs, and it's my quality of life. It's being blinded, it's not being able to use porches, it's not being able to have visibility, not even safety on my own property, because you've got these big dark holes because of all of their glare, and none of that's being addressed. So, if it is, I'd like to know where I'm not seeing it, okay? But thank you, stay safe, and have a good evening. Bye-bye.
Thank you, Pat. Councilmember Peterson.
Yeah, so, if we, can we go back and talk about that for a moment?
Um, yeah, if you have a comment.
Yeah, I do, I do. I mean, so, I guess because it is very unclear of, you know, even in the residents' eyes of, like, that half candle foot that we, you know, were going to change it to, that's how it was presented to us, to help in the residential setting, without really, I don't know how much that affects if those, because if those lights right now, per the ordinance, are shielded, would that not protect her then as well? Because that's what we're asking for. In this ordinance, we are asking that those still have to be shielded, correct?
The way, excuse me, the way I am reading and interpreting from talking to Attorney Krad is, we would take a look at those lights, and more than likely, they would be required to be shielded.
Correct, and then that would alleviate that.
Some problems.
It would, I would think it would.
So, would it help if the residential lighting, because I can see why commercial lighting is one candle power, you know, one candela, I can see that, because of what, I mean, for safety purposes, but, so, at a residence, you know, going to that half, does that really change, how much does that change it in light power that's being seen?
It really gives us two different pieces. Both of them, I would think, are not, none opinions. We can measure the light, and we can see the light. If we can see the light with a spotlight or floodlight, we can see that it's directed down, or that it's shielded, that's something we can see and is not an opinion, and by having the use of the one candela, that's, again, something that we can measure. Keep in mind that if the floodlight was four feet off of the property line, an example, it could be shielded, but yet it could be spilling off of the property line onto somebody else's property. So, by having not only the shielding, but also the measurement of the one candela, it really gives us what I think is full, the ability to fully look for compliance within the code.
Okay, so, within, if I may, Mayor, if that was a half candle power, candle, candela there, right, would that actually help alleviate these concerns that have been brought forth?
The current concern is not an issue with candela, because I've been out there four times myself personally at night, and have measured it at .25 candela, so that's not the issue. The issue is the, I'll call it the direction of the light source, and the way it should either be shielded or directed, would help to eliminate this particular complaint.
Okay, so...
And, I'm sorry, in the past, I'll use the example of up in Great Oaks, where we've had a complaint there, we were not over the candela rating at the property line, but we could see the light, but we asked then for the property owner of the multifamily there was to redirect and shield, and that eliminated the issue.
Okay, all right, so, in the ordinance that we just sent through to go to planning, it does state that clearly here that those would have to be shielded then?
I'm sorry?
Correct.
It does state that those would have to be shielded, so we did address the one concern that may help the residents?
I believe we did.
Okay, all right.
And that was by guidance from City Council.
Right. That's all I wanted to clear up, because it sounded like we hadn't addressed those issues, so, thank you.
Hopefully, that will work. But it's, I guess it's always a living document, and we continue to prove upon it.
Mr. Mayor, if you like, we'll maybe set like a six-month follow-up to you, can let you know if we've had complaints, what we've had, and how we were able to bring conclusion to those complaints.
Good.
Thank you for that, Chief. Appreciate that. Okay, next on to new business referral and miscellaneous, public comment, I guess...
Brian, I just checked with him, and there is no public comment, no one waiting for public comment.
Thank you. Next, we have a resolution regarding Rochester Community Schools building. This was brought up in the last meeting. We asked the City Attorney to take a look at it. This was his take on it, and so this is up for discussion tonight. Obviously, there's been some comment from the school district as well. Mayor Protem Salvia.
Thank you. So, yeah, there have been some very aggressive comments made from the school district. I thought they were very, almost an attack. So, my question for the City Attorney is, what is the layman's terms on a non-binding resolution? What's the legal impact?
Well, I don't like the term "non-binding resolution." It doesn't, I mean, it's a resolution, all this is a statement, that's why you don't see "non-binding" or anything like that in this document. This is just a resolution that says the city would like the community school administration to consider and to think about when they're going to sell the property. When I did, just to kind of bring, when I did talk to their attorney, who called me, and we had a very nice discussion, and I said, "Well, what is it about this document that is so offensive to this school district?" And the response was, "Well, because, you know, while it says encouraging, encouraging, and, you know, it, their concern is that it will put a chill on the potential suitors to buy this property, or to decrease the value of it if a prospective purchaser wants to go forth and say, 'Well, listen, the city's already looking at this with the preservation issue at mind, this is just not worth it, and they could have less people,' or if there's, you know, especially when it was combined with Area 5, which was, to me, is a simple statement of, "Hey, by the way, just to make sure everyone knows, that this has to go before Planning Commission and City Council for approval, like any other, you know, project like this." But it was, you know, taken into tandem was, the concern was, "Well, that means that the city's going to put extra scrutiny on anything dealing with historical nature on it, and kind of a, you know, hey, by the way, we're watching this." And so, I wouldn't, the whole non-binding resolution, I don't actually know where that term came into play, but this is, they just made it clear that they just don't, they don't want this paper out there, you know, they're aware of the city's concern and emphasis on historical preservation, they've established a subcommittee to recommend on these things, but they just feel that this is going to be problematic when they do figure out, when they do go out for proposals or to sale, that this is out there. That's, I don't necessarily agree with that, but this is, it was, I even tried to work Smith to see if there would be, if there's certain things in the resolution that were more offensive, and they said, "Just the fact that you're doing it is this." I mean, I said, "Well, they could read it, and, you know, into the record, that these are the concerns, this is what they wanted to do," and they'll say, "Well, yeah, that's fine, but it's not a, this is definitely an official paper, I call it a communication of position, like we've done on other things," and they are really strong in that they don't want this out there before they figure out what they're doing with the property. And I did receive the email, I believe, from one of the committee members, even saying, "Well, can you at least just postpone until after we go out for bids and everything like that?" So, it's a little mixed to, "We don't want it at all to, well, maybe table it until the end of March," or whatever that was. So, I know that's a long answer, but I figured I was going to talk on that issue anyway.
So...
The Mayor Protem.
So, thank you. Thank you for clarifying that. So, I, I mean, I do not want to be non-competitive in any way, shape, or form. I think we want to support encouragement. You know, this is a unique site for redevelopment that is going to need grant money, it's going to need a lot of money. I think we want to be encouraging of all of that process. It's a first I've heard that they possibly don't understand the city of Rochester's process, and that therefore, Item 5 could be confusing to them, because any project would come before Planning Commission and City Council. So, I guess I'm not sure how I feel about this, but I do want to make sure we are supporting open and competitive process, as well as supporting our intent that our residents have strong opinions on the historic value of this parcel.
Councilmember Sage, and then Councilmember Peterson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, a quick question for the City Attorney. I was somewhat confused by the correspondence we received from Mr. Justin, where it's asking for somewhat of a managed tabling of this resolution, but yet then, the comments from the RCS Attorney would seem to indicate that they want no formal action ever taken at any time by City Council. So, I'm trying to get clarification on that point first, and then I have a comment.
I have no clarification from you, or for you. The Attorney is, the message that I provided to you was the, "We don't want this," and then, when I saw that email from Mr. Justin, that seemed to be not necessarily inconsistent, but a little different, so I don't know if they're necessarily on the same page, but to the same impact, which is, don't put this out there before we've figured out, you know, before we've gone for proposals, and we have figured out what a potential suitor.
Okay, thank you. So, the nice thing about a resolution that could be issued by this council is, it serves many functions, right? It can be recognition for someone. It can be a demarcation for a special event or date, but it can also convey, to Mayor Protem Salvia's point, the will and conviction of the constituents, the residents of Rochester. And we, on this board, have heard those voices, and, so maybe the way around this, and I would be willing to not table, I don't want to call it table, I'd be willing to reschedule this discussion to the next meeting, with an open invitation to every person on Rochester Community School Board to come and address to us their concerns specific to how this will, how we are jeopardizing their ability to sell that property. I would welcome that, an open discussion, public discussion, on-record discussion.
Councilmember Peterson.
Yeah, thank you. So, I guess I'm confused, too, as to why they would be so up in arms over this here, because, as stated, this community, everybody in this community, everyone in the surrounding communities, most people know the significance of this building, no matter what, they've known it for years, it's nothing new. And two, we do not have a historical district where that would interfere with the development of that parcel, no matter who's going to purchase it, right? And no, we can't control who's going to purchase it, he who has the most money will probably get it. However, I think that we don't, we have a right to put a resolution out to any party that we feel needs to hear from us, who we represent the people, that there are concerns, and we want you to be mindful of something. There is no, of what you're going to do with something, there is nothing in here that is, you know, negative, it's just that it's really reiterating the historical significance of a building that we have for years took pride in, and that's why it's been here. It's unfortunate that the school district took it upon themselves to go the back door on this here anyhow, to our own community, and not let us know what they were doing ahead of time, because we could have, they could have helped us make this an easier transition. So, I'm happy with sending this forward. I don't really want to hold back, because we do represent the people. The people are the ones who are concerned about what's going to happen to this, and they know in the end that it is what it is, and something is going to change. But interesting, I did receive a phone call from a friend of mine, who loves historic buildings, that was just driving through town, lives up in the pier, and said, "Hey, so, is it true? I just heard they're going to tear that down," you know? And it's like, so, yeah, it's probably going to be what's going to happen to it, you know? So, I think, whether or not the school board likes it or not, I think they did themselves their own disservice by doing how they did this, and we could have avoided a lot of the angst that they're feeling right now from the public. And right now, I think we need to protect our interest as a community in preserving what we feel should be preserved. Doesn't mean it's going to happen, but it means that we are taking those steps to put them on notice that the residents and the people here care about this building, so... But it's really interesting, because I can tell you right now, because there's no significance of changing anything, of getting a better or worse buyer for this property, and no one's going to, not in today's market, you know? So, and that's what I do, so I mean, I know it has no significance to that.
Thank you. Councilmember Olbrich.
Thank you, Mayor. A non-binding resolution is a written motion adopted by a deliberative body that cannot progress into law. An example would be a resolution of support for nation's troops in battle, which carries no legal weight, but is adopted for moral support. We are elected officials, all of us here on City Council. The email I got from Mr. Justin, to my knowledge, is not an elected official. I have heard more on this issue from residents, on the importance of this building, and preserving whatever we can, from the mural, which we brought up and discussed several meetings ago, and any developer looking at this property is not going to be swayed by this resolution as much as by what they already know. Any smart developer knows the historical nature of that building. And I concur with Councilmember Sage and Peterson, and Mayor Protem Salvia, that this is our obligation as elected officials. I feel more passionate about speaking up for our residents now on this issue than really a lot of, any issue that's come before us in the last three to four months. And when I got the email from City Attorney and Mr. Justin, it felt like I was, we were being bullied, and I don't like being bullied. And... I was, we were being bullied. And I don't like being bullied. And I represent the 13, 14,000 residents and voters of Rochester. And I don't think this non-binding resolution where we are stating the obvious, that any developer coming in here already knows whether we put this through or not, is going to happen. That being said, and I was prepared to make a motion tonight, and I still may, to put this forward, but I did like Councilmember Sage's suggestion. I would not delay this until March 28th, as Mr. Justin suggested in his email to me. And I'm assuming my peers on city council also received a similar email. I would not delay it that long. But if we were to postpone or table this discussion till the next meeting and
Reschedule, reschedule was the wording.
Okay, well, reschedule this discussion in the next meeting and take Councilmember Sage's advice to invite, Mr. Justin can come, the city, the attorney from Rochester Community Schools, or anybody else who wants to come for or against this this resolution, I would be supportive of that. Thank you.
Councilmember Gould.
Yeah, thank you. I kind of felt the first thing that when we discussed this last time that this was relatively harmless. I've spoke to a lot of people about it. I didn't get an email from the city attorney, but I did get Mr. Justin's email. After thinking about it a while, I feel almost like this be like my neighbor is is going to sell their house and they're going to, I don't know, do something crazy with it without consulting me. They're going to do that. And then I come out and say, anybody that does that's, you know, in violation of some code. I just think we may be able to do a lot better for the property, even for its historic preservation. I appreciate what you're saying about it's going to be very tough to find a buyer anyways, working together with the school board rather than antagonistically with the school board. To my knowledge, we haven't, maybe somebody has called Robert Shaner or somebody and said, hey, what are you guys thinking? Is there a way we can work together, maybe to help you get a better buyer so that we can have some of the historic preservation? I like your idea of having somebody come or at least a call perhaps between the mayor and the superintendent or something so that we're working within our community, with our community and our community partners to try to get the best for the property. That's just, that's my thought.
Councilmember Harrison.
Thank you. I agree with Councilmember Gould and Councilmember Sage. I think that, you know, the school board, we're all friends in this community. And I believe truly that we all have the best intentions at heart moving forward. So I would want to invite the school board or Mr. Justin, whoever's appropriate, to come to the next meeting to discuss this, to to hear them out, because I am in support of the resolution. And I want to see the historic nature preserved. I think we all do, but we're realistic at the same time and what the possibilities are. So I'd like to hear from from the school board about their concerns publicly.
Councilmember Peterson.
So, and I understand that too. It's however, this has been going on for how long since we found out? Nobody actually came to the city or to us to be kind enough to actually talk to us either, or, I mean, you know, city manager and the mayor to really come to some sort of, you know, resolution on its own that, you know, we're going to do our best. That's all they really had to say, right? We haven't heard anything like that. And I can tell you that the last time we sent a resolution to them, it was over them raising the taxes, you know? But no one had a problem with that one, you know? And those are what people don't realize. That's why our tax bills are where they are, because of the schools and things like that. So this has to be a two-way street with everybody. And I don't think that, you know, what, it's almost like, what are they trying to hide that they are so adamant about something so simple? This was out of the goodness of our heart representing the people. This was not something to like, well, we don't want you to tear it down and we want you to do this. This is nothing about that. Not one person has ever said that publicly. No one's ever said, well, we're going to make sure you can't do anything to it. We've never stopped them from moving forward. I think it's really, I think that if you want to bring them here, well, it'll probably be like DTE, you know, and maybe they won't show up, you know? But and then that's, what does that mean to us then, right? Then they're going to be very disrespectful to us. And I think that's opening up that who's going to come before us and speak. We've asked that from the very beginning when we first heard that they bought another building. No one's ever come before us. No one's taken the time to care about what we feel here or the residents feel. So I'd be happy to, you know, make this, you know, wait until the next meeting. But as it's stated here, there's nothing harmful in this to hurt them from doing anything but for us to, you know, ignore our residents. I think we're, that's who elected us, not the school board. They don't live here, you know, not all of them. So, you know, different communities. So it's my two cents. But hopefully they don't plan on raising taxes without letting us know ahead of time.
Mayor Pro Tem Salvia.
Yeah, so I just wanted to add a comment that, you know, I did ask if I could come in and see the mural. And in doing so, I just thought I was taking the high road. I think it's a public building. I should be able to just come in. And city manager made that request for me, and I was told no. And so then city manager, while he was there for a meeting, took some pictures of the mural and offered to give them to me. And when Dr. Shaner saw him doing that, he said, oh, well, I'll have coffee with Nancy. Have her reach out to me. I'll have coffee with Nancy if she wants to talk about this. So that was before the holiday, and that hasn't been scheduled. But I was surprised that that would be such an issue, that I just wanted to come in and look at the mural. So I'm really unhappy with the tone of this.
Is that not a public building?
Yeah, but they can limit, I guess.
Right.
Councilmember Albrecht and then Sage.
I already spoke.
Okay, I'm sorry. Councilmember Sage.
Just a quick question for the city manager. So in the timeline, we know, to Councilmember Peterson's point, we were not informed of the sale of that building or the purchase of the the new one. You would have thought that would have been a courtesy, if you would. My question would be with regards to this legacy development committee. How did we get on that? Were you invited or did you actually have to ask to be invited, to be involved?
Yeah, I was invited.
Okay.
He was invited, but they did not want any elected officials from our council on there.
Or their board is what they told me. They were trying not to have elected officials part of that process. And the committee is going to make a recommendation regarding the artifacts and regarding the building.
So I guess I'd like to amend my thought for for this board's consideration. Unless one of the elected officials from the Rochester Community School Board is willing to come and address us at the next meeting, we don't need to waste the time. And I would support, if there is a motion, to move forward now.
Make a motion that we move forward with the resolution as presented and submitting it to the Rochester Community Schools.
Motion by Councilmember Peterson. Is there support?
I'll support it.
Support by Councilmember Sage. I guess I'll, I'll make my comments tonight. First, I think we all agree that the schools are our partner. Schools are important for our city, our residents, and we want the best for the school system, of course. And it's obviously a difficult time to be on a school board with everything that's going on in the world. So we understand that, and we want to work with them. We also understand it's their building. They're going to do with it what they think they will. It's clearly not our building, and we're not telling them what to do or how to do it. I mean, I think we're very clear on that. They can sell it to anybody they want. There's nothing we can do about it. And we want them to get the most that they can for their money, however they want to do it. But I do agree, though, that the history is known. This is not some deep, dark secret that we're putting out there. Everybody knows this is a historical, and every builder in the world in our local area knows this is a historical building, knows they're going to have to work through this issue. So again, I don't think we're, you know, putting anything out there that's really not well-known. And also, this is a big building in our city. We are the elected leaders of this city. We are allowed to comment on big buildings and big issues in our city. That's why we ran for office and were elected. So I don't feel like we're doing anything wrong here. I don't think we're hurting the sale of their building. If I thought that, I wouldn't do it, because we clearly don't want to do that. And finally, I just, you know, want to want to make a comment as the mayor, is this heavy-handed approach that the school board seems to take with us, but also with residents that we've heard of, really is not productive. You know, we should all be collaborating. We should not be getting, you know, emails, texts, and stuff that really sound like threats. And I don't think this council, ever since I've been on here, has given into threats, has been given in intimidation. And we're obviously not going to do that today. So I would just urge the school board to take a more collaborative approach. Don't lecture us. We're not lecturing you. We want to work together. And so this is not productive. So I support this motion. You know, if we want to wait a meeting, I guess I'm fine with that. I'm not sure exactly what that is going to do. I am more than happy to talk to, you know, the head of their school board, whoever wants to, you know, if they want to call me, and we can talk about it, or they can certainly come to the meetings. I'm very willing, but, you know, just to come down with the hammer on us really isn't productive for any of us, I don't think. So those are my comments. So there's a motion on the table that we're discussing. Councilmember Albrecht.
I'm perplexed here because, as I stated earlier, I'm in support of the the non-binding resolution. But I still go back to your original suggestion, Councilmember Sage, to table this, reschedule this for next meeting, so that if Rochester Community Schools wants to send a representative, so either from their board or this Bob Justin or whoever, to come speak before us, I do believe it's a collaborative process. I would like to give them that chance. I have a lot of empathy for those people on the school board. They have had a tough row to hoe for the last two years. And I don't want to make that even more difficult for them. So if they have an opportunity to come speak before us, I would rather do that at the next meeting than vote on this motion tonight. If the vote does happen, I will vote no tonight. However, I do still support the non-binding resolution after a discussion with Rochester Community Schools.
So I guess I'll throw out a suggestion to the makers of the motion, that in the spirit of collaboration, we push it to one more meeting to give them a chance. Not that, you know, that we still, most of us, I think, support something, but give them a chance to come speak in the in the spirit of cooperation. Councilmember Peterson.
So I guess because there's, I didn't know that all this was going on, you know, of all the angst with them and stuff like that, I would have thought we could have had them on the agenda, you know?
Well, I think a lot of the pushback from the school board just came last day or two.
Oh, okay.
Today at 1:00.
1:57 is when I got the email.
Okay.
And I received texts from people pretty aggressive. Today, though, not.
They could have shown up at the meeting.
Well, yeah, I do think that, I don't know, if I had such a problem with something that we were going to be doing that they learned of, I would have wanted to be here to address my concerns to the city council. I mean, that's who we are. I guess in my other, I don't know.
Well, I think they, in my opinion, they were very clear in discussing what they wanted. They didn't want this. There was no ambiguity in their position, I don't think.
Having done to do it publicly.
But I don't think that'll happen. So that's my, that's my biggest concern. I don't think at this point that's something we're going to receive. I think that's going to be, you know, they'll call the city manager and the mayor and talk to them and not come before us because of saying something publicly on record here. So I guess in the spirit of, I guess, you know, when you talk about the spirit of everything, it would have been nice if, I mean, when everyone gets blindsided that, oh, that building's been sold and they're moving in, and the whole world goes up in arms, right? Because that's what, this is what this has been since that happened. Amidst all their stuff that they've been going through, they still manage to go ahead and do that, which is kind of ironic, you know? So I, I will, if you want to, I guess we'll wait to see if the vote goes through. But I'm still, I'm not going to waver from this because we do represent the people. That they actually, they're the ones who have been making their thoughts known publicly on, I think, probably every social media that you guys have been talking about of, you know, what their concern is about that building. And, you know, that they care. I mean, it's hard when you have a community that is so close-knit and has so much heritage here. I mean, we are the first settlement in Oakland County. You would think that that would mean something even for the school board, for that building, because it's been here a long time, too, for what its purpose was. And not to mention, they don't bring up the fact that, you know, they don't have to pay taxes, do they? So that's been a nice piece of property for many years that, now we have two, right? So, yeah, that's, nothing's talked about that either, so.
Councilmember Sage.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So as the secondor of this motion, I would also consider rescheduling this for a more public opportunity. I'd rather take the high road here. I agree with everything, I agree with everything you've said, Councilmember Peterson. I, it's very frustrating, very frustrating. There was, there was just such egregious lack of forethought on their part regarding this. And then the way they handled it, just to, just strong-arm their opinion on us at the last moment before we even had a chance to even consider it, I guess maybe it would be better. Maybe we do serve our constituents better if we allow them to publicly help us understand what their angst is. And if they're not willing to do so, then
That's up to them.
Yeah, but we still move forward with what we feel we have to represent our constituency.
And we can still do that at the next meeting.
No, that's fine.
So Ms., Madam Clerk, so do we make a motion to table this, so then it automatically comes up?
Yes, please.
Councilmember Albrecht.
Make a motion to table this discussion till the next meeting.
Support.
Motion by Councilmember Albrecht, support by Councilmember Harrison. Madam Clerk, the role, please.
Vixen?
Yes.
Salvia? Yes. Albrecht?
Yes.
Gould?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Sage?
Yes.
Maybe Mr. City Manager, you can communicate to the powers that be at Rochester Schools that this is on the next agenda.
I would like to see a formal invitation to every one of the board members.
Yes. Otherwise, we should be approving it at the next meeting.
Right. Well, just let them know it's on the agenda, and we are inviting them.
And they can appear by Zoom, I assume.
I mean, we should have the tricaster issue resolved by then for the Zoom.
Either, or they can come here if they want.
I guess if we can let them know too, I think, Mayor, that, you know, if you're not going to show, at least let us know a day or two ahead of time so we can be prepared. I think that's
So they can, they'll be here or they won't, right?
Yeah, okay. Well, that's fine. That'll say a lot. Hopefully they're watching.
Okay. Next to the city manager update, Mr. City Manager.
All right, for my updates, council has asked for a special meeting to discuss our upcoming master plan update. Our executive assistant, Laura, has worked with council, and the date that she has determined that most council members can make is on Monday, And, um, just, uh, just wanted to, uh, to note that. And if there were any problems, to let either Laura or myself know, otherwise, um, that would be a, a special meeting, uh, in the council chambers here at seven PM on January thirty-first. Uh, other than that, uh, I know council is aware that we have, uh, postponed our emergency management tabletop exercise. Again, with the current outbreak, uh, uh, and higher case counts for COVID, uh, didn't feel, uh, it was the appropriate time. And we've also been using our, our fire station again as a, uh, the COVID, uh, testing site and, uh, vaccines. So, um, just as that was a, a larger venue for us to do that and we, and want to use both our police and fire, we just felt it was not appropriate to do that. Um, that's all I have.
Councilmember Sage.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, could I just clarify a couple of dates, uh, with the city manager, please? So, um, you just mentioned January thirty-first and I thought it was six o'clock, so now it's seven o'clock?
I thought six, two.
Which one? The thirty-first?
Is this the master plan discussion?
Yes, master plan discussion.
Yeah, let me pull up.
Six, two.
Double checking on my calendar, what Laura set up.
The SWAT was on the twenty-fourth.
His update says, the update he said says seven.
Okay, okay. The SWAT's on the twenty-fourth, yes.
SWAT's on the twenty-fourth after the council meeting, correct?
Yes.
Okay. And then the twenty-sixth of February is the now new-
Nine o'clock.
Budget meeting?
Yeah.
And then the master plan meeting on the thirty-first is now seven?
It says six.
It, uh, I'm sorry, I would have to confirm with Laura. She had, she, she helped me draft the, uh, what's in the council packet on the twenty-second. It's either at, at six or so. I mean, you guys can tell me. I mean, you're the ones that-
I had six o'clock.
Six PM? I'm happy to keep it at six if that's-
Okay, thank you. Yeah, and again, everything is-
Yeah, it's in your email, Blaine, that says six o'clock for the thirty-first.
Okay.
I, I'm assuming we can have them, again, Blaine and I are talking all the time about COVID, as, you know, hopefully it's going to be going down by then. But we're just keeping an eye on that at all times.
With, with the master plan, uh, update, uh, I've been in touch with, uh, Michelle from, uh, the, the consultants. If there's any questions that, um, anybody has, please let me know and I'm happy to, or Laura's happy to forward them on to Michelle. Um, otherwise, she's going to be doing a similar presentation that was given to the planning commission, which the mayor and, uh, Councilmember Sage have, have seen already. And they've actually added their comments and of course, they could always add more. But if there are any questions, uh, Michelle, uh, she said she'd be more than happy to take them sooner so that she can do some research instead of, uh, just being on the spot and answering, uh, through the hundred and some page document and, uh, trying to go through things.
Yeah, I would say Mr. Sage and I put our two cents worth in. Anything further, Mr. Manager?
Nope, that's it.
Uh, Chief, you want to say anything tonight?
I would call in if I did.
Okay. Uh, Madam Clerk?
Nothing this evening, Your Honor.
Uh, Councilmember Gould?
Uh, nothing, thank you.
Councilmember Albrecht?
Nothing, Mayor.
Mayor Protem Salvia?
Yes, just a reminder to the public that, uh, Friday and Saturday is Snow Glow. I've had several residents say, but I look online and it says fire and ice is canceled. So just, you know, make sure everyone's aware that all the parts we love, sculptures, fireworks, they're happening, so, see you there.
Councilmember Sage?
Nothing this evening, sir.
Councilmember Harrison?
Uh, yeah, I had originally scheduled a pancake breakfast at the Fire Hall, um, last Saturday, the, the eighth of January. That was, uh, that didn't take place. It is being rescheduled though. So when we get a new date, I'll let everyone know because I know you want your pancakes.
Mm-hmm. Councilmember Peterson?
Um, you know, seriously, I just really want to, um, thank everyone at the city, all the DPW, police and fire for really, um, a great twenty-twenty-one of keeping us all safe and everything that they've had to do. And seeing, um, seeing from, you know, the outside of how hard that they are working and temperatures and disasters happening all the time and things like that, it's just, it's, uh, it's really not, uh, really, you guys deserve a big thank you for what you do and, um, very appreciative of that. And I'm really sorry that you also lost a K-9 operator. That was really sad. It's a beautiful thing you had on Facebook. Um, just you guys put so much heart and soul into what you do and for our community. It's just, it's a beautiful family you have there, so anyhow, that's it. And here's the twenty-twenty-two.
All right, thank you. Well, I'd just like to also say to Snow Glow, the fireworks start at eight o'clock. Um, there's a little pre-show before, we're going to induce the sponsors who really, as, as Councilmember Albrecht said, really stepped up to kind of pick up when the county kind of went out and picked it up. So that's, that's really great. And actually, it's kind of nice that we, now that we can, hopefully can sustain that and we're not dependent on the county. Um, I mean, it'd be nice for the county to come back, I guess, but, um, you know, we'll, we'll do what we can. Um, also, just again, thank you, everybody, for coming out tonight, wearing masks, um, and, you know, really coming out to do the city's business. Uh, I really thank everybody for doing that because it'd been easy to cancel this meeting too, but I think we want to try to keep doing the city's business as much as we can. So on that note, um, stay safe and stay warm, everybody. Thank you.
Thank you. What happened with the K-9? No, the K-9 officer.
No, the officer.
Oh, there's a K-9, no, no, no. K-9 officer, part of the big K-9 unit family. He passed away.
Oh.
Yeah.